Iowa Tana City Council Meeting for Monday, July 31st, 2017 to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Voss.
Here.
Hoekberg.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Burbank.
Rainey.
Here.
Spenvy.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Koontz. We have six of the council present.
We all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone to a beautiful night and beautiful Iowa Tana. We'll get started right away. We need to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is, Mayor has some business due tonight, but he's not here, so we're going to let Chris do some work tonight.
That's right. I would entertain a motion, or I would like a motion to approve our new EDA member, Kate Harthenon. So if we could get that.
Do I hear a motion to approve Kate to the Economic Development Authority?
So moved.
Motion by Nate.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I will ask Kate to come forward, and I will try to step in very big shoes in our way. All right, state your name.
Aye, Kate Harthenon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The laws of the City of Iowa Tana.
The laws of the City of Iowa Tana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties as a member of the Economic Development Authority.
The duties as a member of the Economic Development Authority.
Of the City of Iowa Tana to which I have been appointed.
Of the City of Iowa Tana to which I have been appointed.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
The best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. And you, we'll get him signed. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for serving on the EDA Board. We appreciate it. We never give thanks enough to the Boards and Commissions that are out there, but the council appreciates all the work they do, and we look forward to their decisions. Well, Chris, how was that playing mayor for the night?
It was pretty exciting.
You did a good job. The next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that consists of minutes, permits, licenses, Boards and Commissions, minutes and reports, Department monthly reports, and other contracts and miscellaneous agreements. They are all grouped together and given to the council in advance, so we can review them, and we vote on them collectively. So what is, which is on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to move 2.2.2 into the action items, so we can have a little further discussion on that.
Okay, that sounds good. We have a motion from Doug to move the 2.2.2 to the action items. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move item 2.2.2 to the action items. So now I look for a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
Your President.
Yes.
Note my involvement with the Silicon Valley Fair.
Okay, so noted. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move to action items, and we'll do the, that item we moved, the Iowa-Minnesota Pirate Fest for August 12th through the 13th, 2017. And you've got some questions on that, Doug?
Yeah, I think my question is twofold. First of all, by adding the alcohol to it, does that change the original approval of it? It seems to change it a little bit, and I didn't know if Chris or Mark would have any input on how that changes it, or if maybe it doesn't.
Yes, it does change the original special use permit. That's why we brought it back on the council. Since the council had approved the original request, we did put it under consent. Could have gone either way. So the issue before you is if it's, if you want to add alcohol to this event. My understanding is they have worked with the police department and are prepared to follow all of the guidelines and regulations that our police department wants to put in effect. I believe our representative is here, if you want to ask him questions, or Tim Trulson is also available.
Tim, you want to have a few comments?
Tim Trulson, Recreation Manager of the City of Iowa Tana. Today we have Gregory Schmidt, who is from the Festivals International. This is an event they've held in Iowa for numerous years, and they want to bring it to the great city of Iowa Tana, so Greg can fill you in on any questions you have today.
Kevin, you have a question?
The one question I've got in regards to alcohol, and I support that, I understand that being a part of the event. Question I've got is in regards to alcohol being consumed within the area. I would, I would ask that you consider putting no alcohol signs beyond this point placed on the, on the perimeter.
I think, yes, that would be a given, and I'll dialogue with Torres, who's our beer concession caterer, to see if he has the signage. If not, you know, we have signage.
Not looking for anything fancy, just something that's.
It's a good idea.
That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Oh, okay, good.
And have you served alcohol at other events previously?
Yes, yes. When I was in Iowa, at PM Park in Clear Lake, it was, there was a restaurant as the co-producer, and alcohol was served. And we run Renaissance Fairs in Omaha, Des Moines, the Mana Colonies in Quad Cities, and another pirate festival in Omaha. And usually alcohol is served at this one, because I'm a youth director, I'm a Sunday School teacher, I'm an Eagle Scout. I prefer, we don't have alcohol, but my co-producer, who will be acquiring the business from me, this particular festival, someone else is getting my other festivals. He highly encouraged the beer concession, and then Torres came forward, and now they claim they've made a lot of steps forward, and they don't want to backtrack. So alcohol it is, with your permission.
Have you had alcohol sales at your other events in Minnesota?
This is my first Minnesota event.
Oh, okay.
Although I grew up in a fishing village in northern Minnesota.
Okay. You mentioned Faribault earlier, and I, are you running this in Faribault?
No, I was just in Faribault doing promotions for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the thing before us lists some things that you have to do in order to have alcohol sales there, as far as special deputies, a couple of those, and that, I think you've discussed that with Tim, so.
Right, right.
You're aware of those things.
Right, and our insurance policies are being enhanced, and we're working with Mark to get him copies of our adjusted policy.
Okay. Any further questions? Brent?
So is it beer and hard liquor, or is it just beer?
You know, I don't know what he's planning. I would think beer and wine. I would prefer no hard liquor be there. But at a pirate festival, sometimes we get Captain Morgan Company to be a sponsor, so the Captain Morgan guy shows up, and then we got to sell rum. I could.
But I think our license allows for Chris, right, either beer or hard liquor, right, any type of alcohol.
I believe so. Yep.
It's, the liquor license would be a caterer's license that is actually issued through the state, and Torres does have an on-sale, caterer's permit can only go to a restaurant that has an on-sale liquor license, and then they get permission to the caterer to take it off-site. And that's where, he will be providing some food as well as the alcohol. He has to provide a food source as well as alcohol. That's why Tori does have some invested into it, because he's planning for that, was making plans for that.
So just in summary, we've approved the pirate festival already.
Yes.
And this is strictly in regards to the alcohol sales.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Good luck. We look forward to it.
Thank you. All right, do you need me to sign in?
Sure, go ahead, please. That's why we put it there.
Tim Trulson will be in his finest pirate gear that whole weekend, so that in itself is worth the admission price.
Should have probably put that in the table. Contingent upon.
Is it impolite to leave?
No, not at all, not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to 3.1, Finance Report, and we'll go to Vice President Rainey for that.
Thank you. Tonight's checks over $20,000 are as follows. $73,913 to Dyken Applied Americas, that's the TIF agreement. $23,362 Fairway Stores, that's TIF agreement. $54,458 Westmore Fluid Solutions, that is the balance of the fuel cabinet at the airport. $112,834 Southeast Service Co-op, that's the July health insurance premiums. Other expenditures tonight are $293,176, for a total expenditure tonight of $557,745.34.
Thank you, Kevin. We've heard the finance report, and I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Nate to approve the finance report. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we go to 3.2.1, the Iowa Tana Art Center Sculpture Garden Proposal, and we'll go to Chris. You have some information on that first.
Yeah, I would ask that the council tabled this item. We want to take, Mark hasn't had a chance to review it, and in our initial review, there's some language we want to clean up and make a little more clear.
Thank you. I'd look for a motion to table item 3.2.1.
So moved.
Motion by Brent. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will be tabled until our next meeting. Next up is 3.4.1, Resolution 68-17, to award the sale of general obligation bond Series 2017A. We'll go to Rhonda.
Thank you. The council had previously authorized Springstead Incorporated to solicit proposals for the issuance of bonds. This morning, those bids were received on these bonds, and we have Doug Green of Springstead Incorporated to present the details of those proposals tonight.
Welcome, Doug.
Good evening. Thank you. A few more. Thank you. As Rhonda mentioned, this morning at 10:00 a.m., we took bids on behalf of the city, had a very successful sale. In front of you, the Yellow Page is our bid tabulation. See, we received six bids, which is a very good showing, you know, for a modest-sized bond sale of 2.13 million. The winning bidder was by Stiefel Nicholas, a very good national underwriter at a true interest rate, which is the interest rate that we award the bonds, at 1.84%. When the council authorized the bond issue a month ago, we were expecting 2.08. The market has gone down since then about 1/10 of 1%, and it looks like we did, you know, a little better than that. It's about 25 basis points lower than what we were estimating a month ago. So very good results. That's around $45,000 difference in interest cost. From top to bottom, Stiefel's winning bid was 1.84, down to the last place of 1.98. Again, so with six bidders, only 15 basis points difference, 0.15%, that's really pretty close. You know, that equates to around $35,000 as well. The awarding resolution this evening will be for $2,015,000. Again, we went out to bid at $2,130,000, because as in the past, there was a premium that was bid, approximately $115,000. We just used that as cash towards the project. In exchange, we pay higher coupon rates, but that reduces the amount that we need to borrow. So again, I would say the, these are very good, very good rates as a part of this, this sale, as we always have to do, is get a new credit rating for this particular bond issue. We did have a credit rating call about two weeks ago with Chris, Troy, and Rhonda, and again, they do an excellent job explaining the direction of the city, the 2016 finances, and all the recent economic development that's been going on in the city. And that rating did come back double eight-two, which again, is the third highest credit rating.
Awesome.
So that's all I had for the bond issue. If there's any questions?
Any questions on this?
I'd like to move on to this other information before voting.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. As you continue discussions on the 2018 budget and the longer-term capital improvement plan, we thought it wouldn't be, just, we thought it would be a good idea just to take a few moments to talk about, to inform the discussion a little bit, to look at this first page that I'm holding, it says financing options for Minnesota cities. State statutes authorize cities to issue bonds, and in Minnesota, cities have very broad latitude to issue bonds for their public capital, capital expenditures. State statutes also allow cities to put their general obligation pledge onto these bonds, even if they are just for water, sewer, other states might not allow a property tax general obligation pledge, and in those cases only, you can only pledge the revenues of the water sewer fund, which is not as secure, so you have to pay a little higher interest rates. But in Minnesota, we do have that authority to put a general obligation pledge on just about anything, just about any kind of capital improvement. Not to say everything, but just about, just about everything. The only difference is, as you go through and talk about all these different projects, whether they're, you know, larger equipment purchases, or their maintenance to existing facilities, or new facilities, or street improvement work, or work at the water sewer treatment facility plant, the only difference is what statutory authority that project falls under. And what you have in front of you is just kind of a cheat sheet of the top six statutory authorities that cities in Minnesota have to issue bonds. There's no point in going through each one. I certainly can if you're interested at some point, but it's really just serves as a visual to, to show you that with each statutory authority, there's just different rules involved with it. Some of them count against the statutory debt limit, you know where you'll never hit that statutory debt limit. Some of these individual authorities have their own, have their own limits. Again, they're set pretty high, and with your large tax base, that really doesn't come into play ever. And then each one just has a different process that you have to go through. It's really not that, some are a little more cumbersome than others, but none of them are really deal breakers. So as you're having those discussions, these are the, some of the things that, you know, Rhonda will be thinking about. What's the correct, and what's the legal and then most efficient statutory authority to use?
Thank you.
You bet. I had one more page. I get a lot of discussions in this very, you know, low interest rate environment. I think the 10-year Treasury was ended again at 2.29 this morning, and what we just sold, you know, bonds over 10 years at 1.83, and so everyone's saying, well, our interest rates are going to go up. So we do get a lot of questions on that, especially as you, you know, going into this budget planning season. And even here sometimes, well, we need to issue bonds now because interest rates are going to go up, which is never really a good idea, issue bonds when you need the money for the projects. Plus, you would just incur more interest over that time. But I wanted to show the impact of what rising interest rates would do. So what you have in front of you is the blue is 10-year, that pink color is 15-year, and the green is 20-years. And that's scenario one. These all assume a $2 million bond issue, so kind of on the, a little bit on the smaller side of what you've been issuing, or pretty close to normal. Scenario one is current interest rates. Scenario two is a full 100 basis points increase, so 1% increase, and scenario three is a 2% increase. So again, that's almost, you know, over, if we're looking at a 10-year repayment period, we're looking at, you know, doubling the interest rates, going from 2% to 4%. And while that does, if you do compare scenario one to scenario three, a 2% interest rate increase, it does certainly make a difference in your annual payment. You know, you're increasing it by, you know, $24,000, you know, which is meaningful. Or if you go down and look at the impact of, to the individual properties, you know, because of your broad tax base, it's spread, you know, pretty evenly, and there's, there's not a big impact. So a 2% increase on a, an interest rate that you'd pay on a $150,000 home goes from $16 a year to $18 a year. Again, we want to keep that as low as possible, but again, if, if we do see interest rates tick up, it's really not oftentimes a deal breaker in terms of the additional debt service crowding out other things that you, you know, might want to do, both in the capital and operating areas. So just a piece of information as you continue those budget discussions over the next few months.
It's good to see it laid out like this. Thank you.
Yes, very nice.
Okay, any other questions for Doug? If not, I'd look for a motion on Resolution 68-17.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve Resolution 68-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item 3.4.2, Resolution 69-17, designate industrial development area. And we'll go to Chris for this, and I think she has Mark here.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to pitch her right over to Mark.
Pitch her right over to Mark. Mark, why don't you come on up?
Thank you. Councilmembers and city administrator and staff, Mark Fritsch, General Manager, Iowa Tana Public Utilities, and I'm here today to ask your support to, for this resolution. It's really to memorialize and affirm our past practices of designating a industrial development area to support the future growth and industrial development in that area. And you can see on that drawing that this area is west of Highway 35, bounded by 14, and new and old 14, and it also should have included the airport surrounding areas out there. And what, what that really is, is that it just recognizes that as the industrial development area for a future industrial growth and planning and strategies, and it has been supporting our strategic plan that we've had with the city for, for quite a few years. And as a representative of the utility, but also one of the members of the Iowa Tana Partners for Economic Development, it's critical that that area there, that we've really supported growth, attaining, attracting, bringing in new businesses and so forth in that designated area. And that area also, we play a big role when it comes to public involvement out there, because what we're hearing from people and businesses that want to develop out there is that they want to have the city services, that for instance, they want to have sewer, water, gas, electric, and so forth, and that's one of the main attractors that brings them in. So some of that property that we own as well, and would consider buying to promote other development in that area. So that's why I'm asking you at this time to memorialize and reaffirm your support that you've given, and especially with that designated area known as the industrial development area.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, Mark, on this? I'm just curious, OPU doesn't serve all of this area now, is that correct?
Correct.
So this helps, by us doing this helps you.
Support our growth. So as you annex those areas, it gives us the opportunity to provide those services for those businesses.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 69-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, next up on the agenda is item 3.5.1, to approve the purchase of properties at 134 and West, and 140 Pearl Street, and we'll go to Troy.
Good evening. Downtown redevelopment is one of the city's top priorities in their strategic plan. The EDA has been pursuing opportunities to redevelop properties and/or areas of the downtown. The city has purchased three properties along East Pearl Street for the purposes of redevelopment. A triplex and duplex have already been demolished, and then the property at 122 East Pearl is currently vacant that the city owns. There are two more residential properties next to these on this side of the street that also could be redeveloped, and the city in past discussions has talked about, if we have a developer that, that wanted to do a project for all five, that is, at that point, we would pursue purchasing the last two properties for a project if those two properties were needed. The city does now have a letter of intent from Nicolai Development to construct an apartment building utilizing the city's three lots, as well as the two remaining lots next to the city's lots, if the city is able to require them. Developer would purchase the five lots for $150,000 and construct a 33-unit market-rate apartment building. Apartment building would contain 18 two-bedroom units and 15 one-bedroom units with balconies and underground parking. The city would utilize tax increment financing to reimburse itself the difference between the costs that the city would have into the properties and what the property would be sold for. The city does have purchase agreements for the two properties at 134 and 140 East Pearl, contingent upon city council approval. The property at 134 Pearl is a single-family house, which was built in 1919, and the property at 140 East Pearl is a duplex that was built in 1914. The purchase price for each of the properties would be $130,000 and $115,000 respectively. The city would be responsible for removing the structures, although the removal of the structures may occur at the time of construction by the developer to speed up the timeline, and the developer would like to start this project this fall. So the cost of purchasing the properties and removing the structures would be paid for by the EDA. These costs would be reimbursed through tax increment financing up to a 25-year period, and the EDA did approve purchasing the properties at their July 19th meeting. So staff would recommend approval of the purchase of properties at 134 and 140 East Pearl. We do have Steve and Nate here from Nicolai Development, too, if there are any specific questions.
Thank you, Trey. I've heard Troy's report. Any questions?
Do we have appraisals or assessed values for those two properties?
We have, we had realtors give us the rate, or the price of which those would be purchased in today's market, and we went off of those.
So we don't know what assessed values are?
Well, we do have assessed values, and they are lower than, than what we're purchasing it for. But in today's market, we went, we had a realtor give us what the prices would be if they were to sell them on today's market.
Do we have somebody here from Nicolai? You could, you would help us out, you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and your company and.
Good evening, Administration Council. I'm Steve Nicolai, owner of Nicolai Construction Development Apartments. We've been in business a little over 35 years. We've been in over five cities. We've built probably over, close to 1,000 apartments in these different areas, and we've, we have, we have a history of building and owning. That's kind of our, our plan. So we kind of take that seriously, because if we're going to build it, they always say you should live in, you should live in an apartment that you build, and so we like to say that, whatever we build, that is something that we'd be very prideful of living in. So we would like to erect a 33-unit market-rate apartment house, brick building with a parking garage, close to downtown on the five lots. We think it'd be an excellent location for the property, mixed ones and two-bedroom apartments, with a nice feature of the underground parking, of course, you can get, we always say, multi-generational customers, because you got an elevator to the top. We kind of pride ourselves in building a fantastic sound wall, because as you know, it's attached housing, and there's a lot of different people living there. So if you have a great soundproofed building. a parking garage, close to downtown on the five lots. We think it'd be an excellent location for the property, mixed ones and two-bedroom apartments, with a nice feature of the underground parking. Of course, you can get, we always say multi-generational customers because you got an elevator to the top. We kind of pride ourselves in building a fantastic sound wall because as you know, it's attached housing and there's a lot of different people living there. So if you have a great soundproof building, you can, it attracts a lot of different types of aged people, which we have a kind of a backbone of that also. And it's kind of a nice because, you know, you have some younger people and some younger people. It kind of makes a community. So we'd like to build this building and I guess we're, we're here for questions.
These would be market rate apartments?
Yes, market rate.
And what other communities are you involved in?
Well, we're in Amelia and La Crosse, Wisconsin. That's, that's where we're from. We've built in Richland Center, Wisconsin, Sparta, Wisconsin, Blair, Wisconsin, West Salem, Wisconsin. We're, we're in negotiations right now in Richland, Minnesota on a project up there. So, you know, we are expanding and we are growing and we've got a lot of great young people that are on staff.
Good.
The future is young people.
Nate, you got a question?
We have an onsite property manager.
Yes.
Facility.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
Go ahead. One of, one of our goals with the city council and the city in general is to revitalize downtown Oatana. That is a historic district. Should this be approved, the facade I am hoping would, would blend in very well with, with what we've got down there.
Yeah, I'm just going to show you. Nate, you want to read that? Those two pictures there? We really didn't have a lot of time to get a wonderful rendering because this has all been traveling pretty fast. If you wanted to, this, this is just basically off the internet, but this is kind of what we would like to build down here, kind of that historical brick look, nice facades, great landscaping. You know, landscaping is everything. So decks. The building would have a lobby if you come in. It would have a fitness center. And it has, what else does it have? A community room.
Okay.
So it has amenities.
This helps us a lot, so.
So the ramp for the parking you are proposing, that would be right by legacy signs? Is that correct?
Yeah, there'd be a ramp. Well, it'd be in the back.
It'd be off the alley?
Would be, north side?
It looks like the west side.
It would come off of Pearl Street, by like the yellow building. Not sure the name, not sure the name of that building is currently, but.
Where legacy signs is. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The only other comment I would make with, maybe with Troy is, in the future might be nice to have that assessed values, given that the EDA saw it and is recommending it, just as far as the value of purchasing some of these properties. That'd be nice to know that going in sometimes, but in the future, if we could do that, that'd be great. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Nate to approve Resolution 69-17. Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? There be none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. We look forward.
Thank you.
Did you need these back or you want us to keep them for the file?
Okay, that concludes our action items for this evening. Now we open the floor up to public comments. Do anyone's here, anyone who was here who would like to comment on any item not on the agenda, please ask that they limit their comments to two minutes or less.
Pirate?
Doesn't look like we have anybody here this evening, so we'll go straight to council comments. And we'll start off with Doug.
I just wanted to take a second and congratulate the Crazy Days Committee. Last Thursday, Friday, Saturday was, I've been to 52 Crazy Days, I think, and that was really exciting to see that many people down there. I got dunked a lot of times and I know the mayor did too, so it was, it was fun to be part of it.
I noticed you looked a little cleaner now. Thanks, Doug. Jeff?
You know, I want to repeat what Doug said. Made it down to Crazy Days, it was really well attended. Chamber did a nice job. Farmer's Market was absolutely great again. And then the art festival up here and the tours to Village of Yesteryear from here and to the orphanage was, was very appreciative and enjoyed the event.
Nate?
Yeah, I'd echo that. We've got a lot of neat stuff going on. It's been a good summer and look forward to more good stuff.
Kevin?
I'm going to echo the same thing. I was down there Thursday and I'm very excited to see what they did this year. And there's already talks about how they can improve it for next year. The only complaint that I heard was the person in the dunk tank Thursday afternoon was, was kind of a different guy, but, well.
Brad Meyer, thank you for volunteering along with, along with Councilmember Voss and the mayor. Weather was perfect and we, we really showed what the city, what downtown can do and it was great. Thank you.
Brent?
Nothing further to add.
No mayor tonight, so Chris, you have to fill in.
Well, I have a couple of things. So first of all, I want to congratulate Andrew Fisher. He has won the Minnesota Wastewater Outstanding Operator of the Year for 2017, Class C Operator. So he was awarded that most recently at their conference. And also some more good news. With the hot weather, we are going to be extending the season at River Springs for an extra week. So we will be open through August 27th. However, the hours are going to change a little bit, so check on the website. I believe they're going to be running about 12 to about 7, depending on the weather. So, but we are extending a full week. Summer goes on.
Summer goes on. Thanks, Chris. I guess I would just add, we're not meeting on our normal night tonight. Normally, we'd meet tomorrow, but that is the night to unite and hopefully everybody gets out in their neighborhoods and gets together. And our next meeting will also not be a normal night. We're going to meet on the Monday before the fair starts, so everybody can be at the fair on Tuesday because we know, we all know the town shuts down that week, so we can all go to the fair.
August 14th.
August 14th. Thank you. So that's it for tonight, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. And I know there's no further discussion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.